Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's February 15, 2018. Happy Blated Valentine's Day. If you would bow your heads, I have the prayer and the pledge. Father, I thank you for this day, this chance that we get to come together to work on things here in the city of Murfreesboro. Specifically, Lord, we pray tonight for our friends in Florida. We pray for those that have lost their lives, for coaches, for parents who've lost kids. And, Lord, we pray for healing. We just ask that you comfort those that are in need. At the same time, we pray for our kids that are in our schools, that any fear that they have, Lord, that you'd take that away. We pray for our service providers who protect our children every single day, for our teachers who teach our kids and who are also protecting our kids. We pray for safety around them. We pray for your peace and your glory. I thank you for the things that we're working on in this city. Let us be guided and directed by your Spirit, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're missing a couple of council members tonight, so we're still have a quorum of four, right? All right. We have one ceremonial item tonight. I always smile when I see Mr. Tucker out in the audience. So, Mr. Tucker, the podium is yours.
Speaking as the county historian.
That's right.
You know, it's a tradition or practice among organizations, be they public or private, to recognize and memorialize their founders. Murfreesboro is an exception. I think a couple of months ago, we talked and illustrated how definition can make such a difference in what we regard as our history. So, let me offer some information to define what would be a founder of a town or a city. I'm speaking about four individuals who I consider to be the founders of Murfreesboro. It began back in 1811 when the state legislature appointed town commissioners. They appointed seven individuals and charged them with selecting a site and developing a town. That alone, you would think, would be enough to qualify them as founders of the town that resulted, but there's more. Each of them was required to post a bond to ensure their integrity of their performance. Each one of them posted a $4,000 bond. $4,000 in 1812 was a staggering amount of money. So, these people are obviously taking seriously the responsibility they've been given. But nevertheless, three of them quit. They quit because of, I guess, a difference of opinion, or perhaps somebody said something and somebody else took it as an insult. But nevertheless, three of them quit. The remaining four, now having to work unanimously in order to have the majority they needed, the quorum, they chose an appropriate site for the new town. They negotiated the purchase of the property from a private citizen. They drew the contract and the deed. They had it signed. They eventually filed it in the appropriate way. They retained a surveyor, one of their own, and had him survey 70 lots around a two-acre center core, which was to be where the courthouse and jail and such would be placed. They conducted an auction sale of those 70 lots to raise funds to build the courthouse. They designed the courthouse. They wrote specifications for the new courthouse and the jail. They advertised in the Nashville newspaper for a builder to come build as they had designed. They hired a builder. Interesting, the ad that ran in the Nashville newspaper is informative because it has the four names of the individuals we're talking about, clearly in charge of what was being done in developing the city. The courthouse was built to their specifications. They then used some of the remaining funds to clear and improve the streets in what was to be the downtown area. And for the next three years, they regulated and governed the city. I think on those facts, we could clearly say, these four gentlemen were our founders. You know, since there has been no attempt to memorialize or recognize these four, I would expect that only those of us that are closely involved with the city today would even be aware of what their names are, or who they were, or what they were. So, let me ask Mayor McFarland, among these four, which one do you find to be particularly interesting?
I don't know. Is this a trick question?
Oh, no, no. I'm not trying to embarrass you, although we probably have.
Yeah, you have.
All right. Well, use your fellow next to you. I know Mr. Shacklet will know one because there's a little bitty sign on the inside circle of the courthouse square that has one of the names on it, right in front of your shop.
Bill, I want to use a lifeline, Bill.
Well, I can't get four of them, but I could, I know William Lidle would be one of them.
Let me tell you about some of these four. One of them is Hans Hamilton. Heard that name? Hans Hamilton. He came into about 5,000 acres in Rutherford County, not because he was a veteran, and not because he was the son of a veteran. He was the grandson of a revolutionary veteran who was a surgeon, serving with the North Carolina military in the Revolutionary War. Died conveniently, so Hans got, if you pull up the tax records, Hans never turned a bit of ground. He was a speculator and a dealer in properties. In fact, every year, he owns different properties in different parts. At one time, he, at one time, he controlled about 10,000 acres, but he was, he was buying and selling. He was one of the four. Another one who is on the little sign, that nobody knows where it is but me, was Hugh Robinson. He was a surveyor that was part of the group of four. And sometime back, the inner circle of the court square was named the Hugh Robinson Circle with no real explanation. Of course, he may be the one who made the embarrassing error that we talked about last month, most likely. John Thompson. John Thompson was proud of the fact that he was a colonel in the Tennessee militia. He also was, at one time, the equivalent of a road superintendent for the first few years of the county. He was one of the petitioners for the formation of the county. He was, presided over the first session of the Rutherford County Court. He was a trustee for Bradley Academy. Late in his career, late in his lifetime, he decided to be a doctor. And before long, was practicing medicine in Murfreesboro. He was a lifetime Baptist until the last few years, and then he converted to a new faith that had come on the scene. In fact, I found one reference to him where he said, quote, "I glory in the name Camelite." The fourth one was Owen Edwards, that even I had trouble figuring out who he was. He came into this area in the 1780s, which means he was about 20 to 30 years before anybody else showed up. Being one of the oldest in the community, probably counted a lot towards his being appointed for this service. He was part of the petition that formed Rutherford County, and he owned lots in Jefferson, which means his position assisting the development of Murfreesboro was working against his own financial interest. But John Thompson, the colonel, Owen Edwards, the older early settler, Hugh Robinson, the surveyor, and Hans Hamilton, the land speculator, are the four who actually founded Murfreesboro, doing all the details of that. All right. There's got to be a lesson here somewhere. Why are they not particularly recognized, or why is there no memorial dating back many, many years to them? In 1815, they were still sitting on quite a bit of money and were running the town as authoritarian. They had been appointed, never elected. And some concerns arose about what was being done with the money and how the money was being used. And finally, a group of citizens petitioned the legislature that said, "We ought to be able to vote. This is a democracy. We should be able to elect our leaders," and asked that they essentially be fired. And the four of them were taken down in 1815, and we had the first Democratic elections of aldermen that set up the town government. I guess the lesson is, no matter how much good you do for people, the last thing you do is what you're going to be remembered for. Thank you.
That's awesome. I can tell you right now, I never would have been able to guess who the four founders of Murfreesboro. That's, that's pretty cool.
Well, are any of you ready with the names now? Maybe we ought to do something, somewhere, to recognize those four. We'll see you next month.
All right. And we're going to have a test on this when you come back. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right. You have several items that are on your consent agenda.
If there's no questions or comments about the consent agenda, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
You have the minutes of the January 11 regular meeting, the January 25 regular meeting, February 8 special meeting, and the February 9 work session. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings. We'll consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 170Z63, to rezone an area along Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to Commercial Fringe, CF District 2017-442.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 170Z64, rezoning an area along Burntob and Veterans Parkway to Highway Commercial, CH District 2017-446.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 18001, amending the 2017-2018 budget, the Second Amendment.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Schreit?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Move to new business. It's always good every year that we get to hear from Joe Hastings and associates with regard to our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year June 30, 2017.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Tucker's story was a good segue into our audit report here, but I'm glad to say that we have a clean opinion, so there's no questions about the money in this case. We do have a clean opinion, and you've got your audit report there. If you'll look under the tab that says Independent Auditor's Report, which is actually page one, as I said, that's a clean or unmodified opinion. It goes through two pages of language to tell you that, but the good news is that that's, that is a clean opinion. The next section there is Management's Discussion and Analysis. That starts on page three. That is presented by management and goes into a narrative of the year that the city's had financially. Gives a lot of information in a few pages about the city's operations financially and the budget and financial highlights that, that are important. So, if a citizen or someone interested wants to get a quick overview of the last year, last fiscal year, that's a good place to start, and it's just a few pages there. We've talked about before, but it's good to have just an overview of what the financial statements of a city government look like. There's actually two presentations for city, city government. The traditional approach is on the budget approach, and that, that focuses on one year of budget expenditures and revenues, and the balance sheet only includes items that, like cash, that we have available to spend on the budget. It includes receivables, that'll soon be cash, but it doesn't include long-term assets of the city or long-term debt, like infrastructure or bonds. And like I said, that's the traditional approach, and just focusing on the budget. Well, sometime several years ago, it was decided that, that another approach was necessary to focus on the long-term financial position of the city. If you go to page 23, the long-term approach includes all the debt of the city. It includes all the assets, which would, which would include hard assets like this building and infrastructure, roads. It includes all the assets of the city. It includes underground assets of the utilities and, and just everything that, that more like a business would present. So, on page 23 is the statement of net position. And as I said, this is the government-wide approach, so it includes everything. And you'll see, under the governmental activities, which is the governmental funds and, and those type of activities, you'll see their total assets of just over a billion dollars at June 30 of 17. And going on down, you'll, you'll see all the liabilities. Again, this includes all the liabilities, including long-term debt, bonds, loans, all the debt. And you'll see a total there in the governmental activities, 385 million for, at the end of June. Going on down to the bottom, where you see the net position category there, that is the total of assets minus the total liabilities of the city. And you'll see, for the governmental activities, there was just over 581 million dollars in net position. For business-type activities, which is the utilities mainly, that's a net position of 571 million at the end of the year. So, the combines, all assets minus the liabilities at the end of the year was 1.1 billion dollars. See that down in the lower right-hand corner. That's the balance sheet. And on the next page, under the same approach, we're looking at the programs of the city, and this is revenues and expenses on, on page 24. And you'll see, for instance, in, in police, where the year ended June 30 of 17, the police expenditures, total expenditures, were just over 29 million dollars. And as you go out to the right, it tells what sources of funds were available to, to finance those. In the police department, as you imagine, there's not a huge amount of charges. There's, there's tickets and that sort of thing that are collected in that department, but not a lot of source. Most of police activities, of course, are covered by, by taxes. Each, each department has that sort of presentation there. Again, this, this includes things like depreciation on this approach. It's depreciation of assets. It's not the traditional budget approach, but it includes all expenses that related to that. But that's the, the presentation on this approach. Down about halfway down the page, you'll see business-type activities, water and sewer. They had a total expenditures of 38.8 million. And there, those services, of course, are provided for by fees to the customer. So, you'll see to the right there, there was 46.7 million in, in fees. So, as you go across, you'll see that it actually had a positive number, net number there. Down below are the general revenues that cover all the programs of the city, like the property taxes, sales taxes, other types of taxes. And as you go down, you can see those. I'm just hitting the highlights here. Don't want to keep you too long, but flipping on over to page 25, this is the traditional approach of the government. And you'll see the different funds there. You start with the general fund, you've got the, the school fund, debt service fund, and then so on. All the other governmental funds are combined into one column that are, that are not as significant funds. But under the general fund column, look down there. Again, this only includes short-term assets that are going to be available to spend in the next budget, basically. So, we've got cash and investments, but the total assets at the end of the year in the general fund was 122 million dollars. You'll see liabilities down below that of 14 million dollars. Now, down at the bottom, an important category is fund balance. Down at the bottom of the general fund column, you'll see that the unassigned fund balance is 54.4 million dollars. What that means is that, that, that is the amount available to be used by the council or by the city. It's what's not been reserved or assigned for any particular purpose, and it's just the fund balance of the city. So, that's, that's a good number, and it's a, it's a sizable number that, that amounts to over 50% of the annual expenditures. So, what it says is there's, there's quite a cushion there in the event that, that something doesn't go as planned. So, you'll see the other funds there. And under the total governmental funds, you'll see in that fund balance at the bottom, bottom right, 103 million, 103.7 million is the, is the combined fund balances. Now, as we flip over to page 27, you'll see that these, these are the governmental funds. Again, the general fund is presented there, along with the school funds and the other funds. Again, this is on the budget basis, so, so this shows the revenues and expenditures for, for the year. And you'll see, general fund had total revenues, 135.3 million dollars, and had total, you'll see the expenditures by, by function there, 103.9 million dollars for the same period. And each of those are presented by fund there. As we go back further, on page 29 is a more detailed approach to the general fund. It also includes the budget comparison. That goes for several pages. It's very, very detailed. In fact, as you go further back in this report, it's, and for people who can't see it, it's a 200-page report. So, there's a lot of information in here. But as you go back further, you get more and more detail about each of those funds, and, of course, I won't, won't go through all that. But starting on page 47 is the notes to the financial statements. There's a lot of information in here about the city's accounting policies. There's information about the city's debt and, and assets. Gives a lot of detail concerning those. On page 65 is where the information about long-term debt is, and you can see the different bond issues, how the debt changed during the year, what was added to debt, what was, what was paid. And then skipping way back to, there's a section called the statistical section. It is, starts on page 153. This includes a lot of data on the last 10 years of the city, and it's a good indicator of the growth we've experienced in the city. You can see things like expenditures, how they've changed each year for 10 years, the revenues.
What'd you say?
Lot of presentations with, with 10-year figures. For instance, on page 157, on that page, we show the property taxes and the sales taxes for the last 10 years. And for instance, if you look at the sales tax column, in 2008, there was just over 30.3 million dollars collected in, in sales tax. In 2017, the year ended June of 2017, that number was 43.6 million dollars. So, you can see the growth there in the retail business in, in the city, and also an indicator of just general growth that we've had. Page 165, gets some information on the outstanding debt. And it indicates things like the per capita amount of debt. It actually went down this year. And flipping on back to page 180, the city receives, as you all know, federal grant money for certain projects and situations. This shows the amount of federal grant money that was received by the city during the year and the program that was involved with that federal money. There's a similar schedule, starting on 182, for state, state funds that were received, There is a, on page 189, there's a summary of our auditor's results. It just gives an overview of, of things like the, the opinion was unmodified and, and a summary of our, of our audit there. And that's hitting the high spots. And that's hitting the high spots. Once again, we'd like to commend Melissa and Aaron for their cooperation. They're great help, and they do a great job. And anytime we do an audit of this size, we hit a lot of departments because we're looking at a lot of transactions in the city. And so we come in contact with a lot of city employees, and we're happy to say we got cooperation wherever we were. So we appreciate that, and we commend the city for great staff. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The report, I think, is already available on the website, and so anyone wanting to see it can find it there on the city's website.
Thank you for all the hard work. I don't want to go straight to material findings, but whenever we're looking at our audit and when we see that we've got repeat finding, do you feel comfortable that we're getting some of those? I mean, it looks like there's minor issues, but are we getting the measures in place to make sure that those repeat findings don't occur?
That's probably something staff should answer as opposed to the person who's supposed to find them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have dealt with some of these findings with the departments where they occurred and talked to them about the importance of making sure that finance is aware. One in particular this year was unrecorded payable that a staff member had held the bill because he wasn't ready for the bill to be paid, which was fine. We just didn't know a bill had been received. If we had known, we could have booked the liability. And so that's why that finding in particular came up. And we try very hard to tell all the departments that you're in, even if you're not ready to pay the bill, make sure we're aware there is a bill. So I think that was communicated pretty well with that department, and we also will watch that more closely to make sure that isn't missed again. For water and sewer, they had actually a different kind of finding this year, but it was similar to the year before. And it was just another issue that arose after last year's audit was done. That's, I believe, already been dealt with, and it was just an oversight. And we also have our cemetery, which has several repeat findings. And last year, I think MTS came in and tried to do some training with cemetery staff about separation of duties and the importance of how things should be booked. That is probably something we may want to continue a discussion with council going forward to see how we want to address those going forward.
Mayor, I will say that an organization of this size with as many transactions as we have, there's typically going to be some sort of recommendation or finding. But I will say here that they take these extremely seriously and work to get them resolved immediately. So we, and we're always willing to help if there's anything we're needed in doing. We have worked with the water and sewer to resolve this finding. We've been working with them on that. So it's something that's taken very, very seriously, and that's something we're, we
Any questions? I love seeing the chart that shows two thousand and fifteen was really the first year that our property tax and our sales tax were equal. And then every, it flipped to where in sixteen, our sales tax was greater than property tax. Seventeen, its sales tax is greater than property tax. So that's a good trend to see. I think this year it was thirty-nine percent sales tax, thirty-six percent property tax. Last year, it was, it was less than that as far as a percentage. It was, that's a good percentage to see. All right, any questions? I think we need to take a motion to accept our audit. So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have some staff you want to recognize who I know helps with the budget or helps with this every year?
Yeah, they not only help, but they do a lot more than I do. But Suzanne Vandiver and Molly Patricus have been with me a long time. I won't say how long, but they, longer than they look. So we're very appreciative of their hard work, and I think, I feel like Melissa is as well.
Yeah, well, it's good to have the extra set of eyes that look over everything, especially to let the public know that we're managing everything the way it's supposed to be managed. So thank you for your hard work and what you do, not just to help us during the budget time, but what you do to help us during the course of the year. Because I know anytime that there's a question, anything that we need help with, you are always there for us.
Sure.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move into considerations of the Water Resources Board.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity this evening to come and present this. This is a veterinary clinic off of forty-five twenty Veterans Parkway. This is a, dealing with our system development charges, our capacity fees, and a special assessment. This does not fall within our defined categories within city code. So we're fortunate that this is the exact same building layout, equipment owner that owns the clinic off of Stones River, the Stones River Vet Clinic off thirty-one sixty-four Memorial Boulevard. So we went back and looked at twelve months' usage, water consumption for that facility, and assumed that this facility would use that same amount of water. It equals six point four single-family units. When you apply our system capacity fee and our special assessment district, the overall Creek Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District, that's sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four hundred dollars respectively, and that's a total of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty. So in instances like these, we bring it before the council since it doesn't fit our regular pattern or our regular formula, and we would request your approval to charge those capacity fees and assessment district, or assessment fee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Obey.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now consider recommendations. The Planning Commission has scheduled public hearings. We have, Mr. Blomley, I'll read them all for you. We have a planned residential development zoning amendment for approximately twenty-eight point one acres in Kimbrough Woods, located along Veterans Parkway and St. Andrews Drive. Kimbrough Development Group is the applicant. Zoning for approximately five point nine acres along City View Drive to rezone from single-family residential ten RS-ten district to college and university CU district. MTSU Campus Planning is the applicant. Zoning ordinance amendments to Section thirteen, Planned Development Regulations, Section nineteen Residential Districts, Section twenty-one Commercial Districts, Chart one and Chart one in notes. Uses permitted by zoning district pertaining to multifamily housing. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. These three public hearings were handled by the Planning Commission in approximately twenty-three minutes last Wednesday night. So I think we can, these three can easily be accommodated in one meeting, and we would recommend, if it works for council, a March twenty-second city council public hearing date for all three of these items.
March twenty-second. Anyone?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blomley. All right, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer for an approval of master services agreement with Energy, Land and Infrastructure, ELI, for professional services.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
You're not the city engineer. No.
He is out this evening. I'm his proxy. The city of Murfreesboro currently has several master service contracts with professional consultants providing a variety of services. ELI has recently provided engineering services for the city of Murfreesboro, both as a prime and subconsultant. Services that ELI provide include environmental studies, permitting surveys, structural design, road design, plans review, and construction engineering. The master service agreement would allow the city staff to use ELI periodically in development and implementation of smaller or specialized type projects. Staff has advertised since June two thousand and seventeen to hire a full-time project engineer to join engineering department, but have not reached an agreement with any candidate. Therefore, to assist with the current workload, we request the approval of task order number one, which allows ELI to provide an on-call consultant service for a project engineer to assist with daily activities of the engineering department. The project engineer will assist with items such as project development, plans review, construction management. Funding will be available based on the implementation plan. Task orders under twenty-five thousand will be submitted to the city manager for review and approval. Task orders over twenty-five thousand will be presented to council for consideration. Staff estimates task order number one to be three thousand per week based on assistance from a project engineer for approximately twenty-five hours per week. We anticipate continuing this service under this task order until a full-time project engineer is hired, which is expected to occur the first quarter of the new budget year. Staff recommends funding these services from the salary line item in the current budget. If approved, a budget amendment will follow to request moving the funds from salary line item to professional services. It is staff's recommendation to approve the master service agreement with ELI as well as task order number one. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr? Mr. Kerr, I think this is also an item that we talked about in our workshop on Friday, wasn't it?
That's correct.
So is this a year-long contract?
This particular contract gets us through the end of the year with, it gets us through the end of this budget year with a monthly extension until we can hire a full-time engineer on staff.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have a letter from the city recorder finance director regarding initial resolution eighteen R zero-three and a detailed.
We skipped number ten.
I'm sorry.
Very similar.
It's all the same thing. I checked, marked over it, sorry. Consider recommendations of the transportation director regarding task order number five with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for a traffic engineer in training, EIT, part-time equivalent. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I could say ditto to the previous and move.
Or still.
Move engineer.
A lot of y'all weren't here, but Mr. Ken Honeycutt, who was the assistant, or was the fire marshal, came up one time, and I read what the comment was, and he looked at everyone and said, "Any questions?" And that was it.
Staff has advertised since July two thousand and seventeen to hire a full-time traffic engineer to join our department, and we haven't reached an agreement with any candidate. The city transportation department recently requests an RFP from two local firms to provide these services. Neil Schaefer was ultimately selected by staff. In order to assist the current workload, we request approval of task order number five, which allows Neil Schaefer to provide on-call consultant services for traffic engineer. Staff estimates the task order will be approximately ninety-nine hundred dollars per month based on the assistance of, from a traffic engineer for twenty-four hours per week. We anticipate continuing this service till the task, these services under this task order until a full-time traffic engineer is hired, which is expected to occur the first quarter of the new budget. Staff recommends funding the services from the salary line item in the current budget. If approved, a budget amendment will follow to request moving the funds from salary line item to professional services. Staff recommends approval of task order number three with Neil Schaefer. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Jim, could you please repeat the number for the monthly expense?
Nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents per month.
Again, this is till the remainder of the year until we can get somebody in place.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, now you have a letter from the city recorder finance director regarding initial resolution eighteen R zero-three and a detailed resolution number eighteen R zero-four.
Mayor, we've talked about the CIP off and on over several workshops over the last few months, and we now have a seventy-million-dollar listing in place. We need to do the initial resolution as well as the detailed resolutions to allow us to move forward with the borrowing. They, the resolution is up to seventy-one million dollars because we do have to be prepared for issuance costs and things that are not part of our regular listing of projects. The resolutions were prepared by our bond council with our input, Vasperian Sims, also Cumberland Securities, of whom John Warner is here tonight. Also went through those and offered suggestions for making sure these are as accurate as they need to be. I'm sure he'd be glad to help answer any questions you may have, as would I or Mr. We have two resolutions.
Yes, we have, excuse me, adoption, we need to consider for adoption initial resolution number eighteen R zero-three authorizing to issuance the general obligation bonds by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee of not to exceed seventy-one million dollars to provide funding for certain public works projects and to fund the incidental necessary expenses related thereto.
So moved on B.
So moved on everything.
Okay, we're going to have a motion?
Motion in a second.
In a second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
I will now consider for adoption detailed resolution number eighteen R zero-four authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed seventy-one million dollars in one or more series, making provision of the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, in interest on the bonds.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now consider recommendations of the interim city manager.
Mayor and council, I know you all have been hearing what I'm hearing in the community about our construction projects. Tonight, we have a package of items for your consideration, which we think will help clarify and allow us to build better processes for the future on our vertical construction. Start with Police Headquarters. The project, I think, got a very bad press release with a huge number over budget, which is just not accurate, just not the case. I heard a great number of comments Sunday when I was around town, and I'm sure you all have been assailed by similar comments. The project is nowhere close to being twenty-three million dollars over budget. That was a headline to garner just exactly what it did, comment around the community. In reality, I think what you're going to find is the project is somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two-and-a-half million dollars over budget. But because of those questions and because of the sheer size of the construction project at Police Headquarters, we want your approval to go forward with what would be a post-construction management review and audit of the building. This is very typical, we think, in very large construction projects. Police Headquarters is by far the largest construction project that Murfreesboro has entered into to date. In addition, we would ask for several other services along with Police Headquarters. We're recommending the firm of CBRE Hiri to do that post-construction management review on the project, along with some other important things, such as helping our staff go through, look at the building as it comes closer to substantial completion, preparing final punch lists along with our staff. lists along with our staff, the things that we don't have enough expertise to be completely able to do ourselves. The price for this has been quoted as hourly rates with a not-to-exceed number of $27,000. We're asking your approval tonight. The funding for this is in the contingency of the Police Headquarters project. I've got to give credit to city attorney Craig Tindall. He has done 100% of the work in getting this ready for your all's consideration. We'll be glad to try to field any questions you have about this post-construction review or audit. We also have a representative from CBRE Herey in the audience with us tonight.
Council members, this is something that we have discussed over the last many, many weeks, but it's specifically, as we've talked about in our last council meetings, on looking at how we handle construction projects moving forward. So, you know, I, I think the Police Headquarters is something we can all be proud of, the process. I definitely think we own when things are done right, and we own when things are, can have improvement, and I think we, this is a step in seeing where and how we improve our construction process. So I think it's something that is absolutely warranted, and, you know, the council, as you all know, we're not involved in day-to-day decisions on what and how the money is spent once we approve those individual items, and I think it's prudent, not only for our staff, but it's prudent for the taxpayer, that we make sure that we're, we're auditing that those things, not only in the beginning, which I think is what we're gonna do moving forward, but monitoring during the process, and then checking that again as the process is over with. And if there's any things that, that this group finds that we need to improve on them as a council, we'll rectify those moving forward.
Mayor, if I could, I'd just add that there's a couple of other services, I think, that have been identified as, as we start to go through the process. A couple of them are outlined here. The numbers here are very preliminary. Herey's only been on the job for about a week, so we're still working through some of these. So I don't want anybody to get set on the, the numbers that are expressed in the information you have, because it's still very, very much an estimate.
Craig is exactly right. Those other services, we're still in discussion with Herey. Commissioning of the major systems in the building, giving our staff the opportunity to see the systems, begin their startup, make sure we have proper training on operating the major systems of the building, serve as a moving manager as, after the building is accepted, as police department begins its physical move from existing locations to the new building, to have someone in charge of that and organize and make that efficient and effective. Last, it's the decommissioning of the existing Police Headquarters. The building can't be left just as it is, and so taking down those major building systems, thoroughly cleaning the building to put it in shape after it's no longer in service as the Police Headquarters. Again, as Craig has pointed out, those fees are still being negotiated at this point in time.
So is this gonna be a monthly contract? So is this gonna be a monthly contract?
They've quoted us hourly rates with not to exceed, and I think those three services that we're still working with Herey on would also be hourly rates not to exceed. We, we feel that works well in this situation. Each project's different, and it'd be very difficult, I think, for them to, to quote a precise number. We prefer having a maximum cap on our contracts like this, so I think it will be hourly rate not to exceed.
Okay. I think we're headed in the right direction with the owner's rep.
So, I'm trying to get my head around, what are we approving? Because is this a long-term relationship, or what are we, what are we approving?
Right now, it's just a, it's an agreement to, to handle this project, to close out this project, for the construction side and then to-
Just the police building?
Just the police building at this point in time. Right.
And, and close out the old building, too? Is that part of-
Decommission the old police headquarters.
Right, to help us close down that building.
I don't like the word mothball, but mothballing of the old Police Headquarters.
So if it gets to that point, to where, was it 29,000? Is that what it was?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand. Will you be back to approve beyond that if something?
Well, right now, it's not, anticipate, there'll be other services that will be required, and there may be other contractors that are required, and so depending on the amounts that those come in, we may bring it back to council. All of this is anticipated at this point in time, and it's still preliminary, but there will be contingency fees or contingency funds left in the construction budget that can handle these amounts. So, you know, technically, they've already been approved, and we're just allocating them to, to different services that still remain.
As we committed to you all earlier, we don't want to spend money out of that contingency without your knowledge of it. We think we have your approval of it already in terms of the, the formal recognition of that contingency budget, and your approval by it as a, a one-large lump sum in the GMP for the building. But our commitment was, we would bring back those items that we're spending out of the contingency for your review.
So we need a motion to approve it?
It's already approved, isn't it?
No.
No.
It's really almost like the audit. We're looking for your approval in concurrence in the actions that we've already started.
I think it's beneficial. It's good to get a motion on it, even, even if it's under the contingency. You know, I think it's something that is good, even large numbers under a master contingency budget in a, in a project like this. Regardless if we have a, a contingency budget that's there, I think this council needs to know when money is being allocated or spent out of those contingency items, because I think it's safe to say, as council members, we may have a contingency budget there, but that contingency budget to us is a worst-case scenario using that budget. And, you know, there's gonna be things in construction that comes up, especially on a building that we're technically renovating slash demolishing almost, but, you know, if there's large numbers of, of contingency items, we need to know about that.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We first learned of, of CBRE Herey and their predecessor firm, which was Pinnacle Building Group, when the city went out to take requests for qualifications on owner's representatives. If you remember, Police Headquarters was really our first experience with the construction manager at risk. Doug Young Training Center was the second of those experiences. And we, what we've found is that the cost savings that I think all of us had hoped for haven't been so readily apparent in using that construction manager at risk process. So we went out and began our search for owner's representative. We found two firms that interested us greatly, CBRE Herey being one, Savalas being the other. We've talked to Savalas about taking over as owner's representative on the Doug Young Public Safety Training Center. The construction manager at risk has withdrawn from that project. So we are currently, once the, the current process is completed, the GMP that is underway, being the Training Tower, is, is underway and completed, we no longer will have that construction manager at risk on that site. We will need some help in determining whether we prepare bid specs and go out to bid with the project, using engineers, using an architect, using the owner's representative. So in discussions with Savalas, we've asked them to come in and do a number of things at the Training Center. To kind of list those for you, number one, to review the current state and progress that has been made at the Training Center. Number two, deliver an opinion as to whether the project, as it is being prepared now, meets both the city's needs for a training facility and can meet the city's budget that you all have set for the Doug Young Training Facility. They would prepare and, and give us recommendations onto the design process, and if necessary, they'd provide us suggestions on how to pull the project back into the budget that you've allocated for it. They, too, have proposed an hourly rate contract with a not-to-exceed number of $25,000. If we choose to use them to actually bid components of the project going forward, there would be a separate contract with additional fees. But in this particular contract, they come in, they review and establish where we are with the project, a process for going forward with their recommendations, and if necessary, how we trim the budget to meet, how we trim the project to meet the budget you've established. We heard loud and clear that this was one of the projects that we want to bring in on the numbers in terms of the budget that you've established.
So is there's a, a written document report?
There, there is, and they did not get attached to the electronic file. I was doing this from home, and there are two contracts with Savalas, one for the Training Center, one for the airport. They're nearly identical. But I apologize that they did not get attached to the electronic file.
Yes, what I was saying, are they going to provide us with a written document as a part of their services? What, how are we gonna receive this information?
They will present us with their recommendations on where the project stands today, how's the best path to go forward, and how do we keep the, the project inside the budget that the council has allotted for it.
Mr. Tindall, you've been working on this quite a bit as well. Do you have any, is, is everything look consistent with what you've seen at other municipalities?
Well, I haven't, I haven't done too much on the, on the Training Center as, as of yet, but, yeah, I mean, both these, both, you have to realize, both these projects are unique, and they have some components to it, because they're both rehabilitation projects, really, that make it pretty difficult for, no matter what delivery method you use to, to develop out there. And we're in very trying times with respect to budgets, because everybody's very busy in construction costs. Material costs have gone way up. So if, if the question is, are, is this type of services consistent? Absolutely. It's, you know, having an owner's rep that we can turn to and rely on as we go forward in construction is, is very important, regardless of the delivery method we use, particularly in this type of construction environment. So I think these, the, the plan to use Savalas, as, as I understand it, I've heard tonight, sounds like it's something that we very much need on this project, which is, has a lot of open-ended things that need to be addressed.
So, Mr. Crumley, can Savalas handle both contracts at the same time? I know they're new to, to the city, but we want to make sure that they can handle both contracts at the same time.
And there's a little bit of time lag between the Training Center and the airport. Training Center is right now, as in, we're ready with site plans to go to work. Airport probably gets to bid within the next 30 days, so Savalas will enter that at a different point, where they get a chance to see the plans, do a little value engineering of the plans before they go to bid, but then actually at the airport, they would perform, perform more of what you would think of as true owner's rep overseeing the construction side of the project.
I think for the public out there, just to make sure that I'm understanding, what we're really looking at is opposed to using a funding mechanism, which is what we've done in the past, to, to put a placeholder and say, we're gonna anticipate that we're gonna borrow X number of dollars for a project, that we don't know what that cost is at the time. We're just anticipating this is what it is. These owner's reps would come in, look at the projects, look at plans from the architect, look at consistent numbers that's in the market, but then also help manage that process as it goes through a low bid process and with the, the, with the contractor. Is that, that correct?
One of the things that particularly interested us in Savalas was they do have some expertise in joining in the process early and helping in the design of the entire capital improvement plan. That is not what either of these two contracts is about. These two are project-driven, one on the Doug Young Training Center, one on the airport terminal building. But we do think in future discussions, we would like to involve Savalas into the capital planning process to see if they can bring us some assistance in this continuing time creep and pricing creep that seems to keep catching us in the CIP.
What's the timeframe as far as their ability to provide all this information to us?
On the Doug Young Training Center, I think we're talking about somewhere around one month on the airfield. It'd be a little bit longer than that.
Are we still proceeding with the tower? Is that?
The Training Tower at the Doug Young Center is underway and will be completed under the existing guaranteed maximum price that we have with the construction manager. They will fulfill that contract before they officially leave the, the Training Center side.
Is there any cost-related withdrawal of that construction manager at risk?
I'm sorry?
The construction manager at risk relationship, is there any cost-related to that?
There, there are none, and we've kept up to par with the development of that, and there should not be any one-time cost with them removing themselves from the process. Both of these will be reviewed in terms of the architect and how we go forward with the architect on these projects, too. There'll be recommendations from Savalas.
Yeah, I don't want to obviously continue to belabor, but, you know, I think if we look at some of the issues that I don't, that we were dealing with, was Fire Station Four, and we went through a different process, and that saved over a million dollars, estimated a million dollars. And as we're looking at the Police Headquarters, we're looking at the Fire Training Facility, we've got Station Four that's going on, you know, I, I think what we're doing presently can absolutely be improved, and I think this is a step in the right direction to be able to do that. Now, at the same time, we've got two groups that we're gonna be working with now that we've not worked with in the past. I think staff has got full, full faith in both groups, and it, honestly, I think the good thing is, having two groups working, we're gonna find which group is, is doing the best, and that gives a little competition to be able to, to look at future projects. You know, I think with, with Herey, or whether it's Savalas, that we're, we're gonna see who's, who's being the most beneficial to the city, and I hope both of them are, but this gives us another level of accountability, I think, that we need on our construction projects.
The team that did the evaluation of the owner's reps' proposals, of which there were five, felt very comfortable with both CBRE Herey and Savalas. Their strengths are different. Herey's strengths are superb in terms of the actual looking at construction projects going in. Savalas' early planning, helping with CIP, we thought was advantageous. The mayor didn't use the word competition, but we'd like to have a little friendly competition at this point in time between those two firms to see how they perform.
All right. And just, just also recall that the costs involved in, in these firms, some of these, some of those costs are made up by removing the, the job from the architect, that you pay the architect to do, and, and shifting him over, so some of that takes, some of that cost is covered on that. The other thing to consider is that you, you take the responsibility away from a department head who really doesn't know about constru-, a lot, a lot about construction, who spends an enormous amount of time trying to figure out and manage these construction projects, and give it to someone who can do it much more efficiently with a lot more knowledge. And, and that cost savings alone is tremendous.
Well, not just cost savings, it's freeing up our department heads to be able to manage the day-to-day operations of the city and the needs of the residents and the services we provide, and not dealing with construction projects. And, you know, so I think even though we're spending some money, we're actually saving some money, because we're letting them do what they're trained in, what they need to be doing, as opposed to managing projects that, you know, that, that we need to hire people who that's their expertise, so.
At the Training Center, in addition to the construction manager at risk having withdrawn from the project's future, we've told the architect to stop where they are until after Savalas can come in, examine where we are, determine the best way to go forward, and then we'll proceed as necessary with both the architect, the civil engineer who's done the site plans, and anyone else that we need on that construction project.
As we're talking about the architect, my blood pressure's starting to rise, so does someone have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now, is this on both contracts? What, what did we just approve?
This was for the Savalas contract for the Training Facility and for the Police Headquarters.
For both?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Excuse me, I-
The next item we had for, for your consideration was the restart of the Public Building Authority. Public Building Authority under Tennessee statute, in a lot of ways, is a super city. It has some authorities that we, as a city government, do not have. One of those is the ability to do true design-build construction projects. We think there's some value in looking at design-build for the actual training building at, at the Doug Young Training Center. The building is a classroom with, in a lot of respects, and does not require a tremendous amount of complexity in its structure. So we think it is a candidate potentially for a design-build solution. So, rekindling, restarting the PBA just puts that option back into our toolbox if we decide design-build with the, with Savalas reviewing the way forward, if they decide that design-build is an option, this enables us to look at design-build as an option for the construction over there. Eight of the nine members are still here in the community. We have not touched base with those folks yet to determine if they're still interested in service. We wanted to hear from council in terms of your all's consideration and opinion about whether the PBA adds value as another tool that we could use.
I think it makes a lot of sense to me to, to reconstitute it. You know, this is another layer of competency and people who are experienced in the construction field that add and look at it from the city's perspective, but have the wisdom and the experience to be able to add that to the projects that we, we have on the rise, and so I think it's, I think it's a good move. Basically, they would be appointed by the council as well.
They are council representatives. If you follow the construction of the Judicial Center, as done by the county's Public Building Authority, it's exactly the same authorities under the state statute, except this one would be the City of Murfreesboro's PBA rather than the county's. We have continued to pay the fees with the Secretary of State's office. The PBA is still alive as a corporation, but they have not met in approximately 10 years.
All volunteer positions?
All volunteers.
There you go. I think, in my opinion, any tool that we have in our toolbox right now, we should look at to see where we are.
It is the only way I know of to get to design-build.
Yep, and I, you know, I, we need to, I, I looked at the list earlier today, there may be some additions or deletions that we need to, to look at, you know, that, because it is, it's, it's like the Board of Equalization that we're dealing with right now with the Registers Office, or, excuse me, the, the Assessor's Office, and it takes so much time that, you know, we're, we're going to be looking for people to serve on that board, and we need to look at that, that list. So I, I think it's, in my opinion, I think it's something we continue to keep active and really, I know, Mr. Tindall, you've got experience with dealing with the PBA that we, I don't think we've dealt with the PBA and...
They have not met since I've been here, more than nine years.
Well, I don't think we've...
They never did anything, I don't think that's needed.
Yeah, we've not, I don't think we've ever used the PBA in a project within the city.
Right, we never did a project that I'm aware of.
That'd be a first time for, for everything. Do we need a motion for this, or?
I, I think a motion would be good. With your all's approval, we'll start to contact these folks and see if they're still interested or willing to serve.
Before we, are the, have we, we, technically, they're not, they still...
Depending on their terms, their terms may have expired, so it would be a good time to review the list.
Yeah, let me...
Can you get us the names?
I've got them.
Okay.
They're on our, our list, yeah.
One, one member's up for reappointment, and there's one vacancy.
Yeah.
And we can't, we contact them every year because they need to waive their meeting if they're not going to meet for corporation purposes, and we've just done that. So, they, I think they got a letter that went out this week, or they're about to get a letter that went out this week, so it's a good time to contact them, because we've reminded them they're around.
So move.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you call the rule.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
The, the last point under the construction memo is really just to say that we heard you all ask for more information on an ongoing, continuing basis about our major construction projects. I think surprise was one of the elements that has caused such questions about the CIP as a whole and about some projects in particular. So, we have a tool that we've used for a long time that tracks the projects in the CIP on a monthly basis with a minor amount of modification. I think it'll be good for you all to look at, to keep you engaged and involved in those CIP projects. Likewise, it is a red flag for us when we've got a project that's beginning to, to creep towards that, that mark where it's over budget or some other consequence. So, just as a matter of information here, we're, we're wanting to report that we did hear you, and we will begin making those reports on a monthly basis.
Jim, thank you for working on this. You know, we had our, our workshop on Friday. I, I don't think, I want to give the council credit that, you know, I think everyone has made it absolutely clear on where we stand on construction projects and with voting on the audit, on, on making sure that we know where everything is, that the information that, that will be and should be brought to the council, that we're kept up to date on those. So thank y'all for, for working on that.
We're, we're continuing to learn.
As we all are. All right, we now have Item B, authorize interim city manager to amend...
We, we got one more.
Okay.
I got one more.
All right.
When you heard Jim Kerr make the presentation about the, the need to hire through a service contract engineers, both for the, the Engineering Department and for his Transportation Department, you saw just a bit of the problem that staff has identified in terms of our lack of competitiveness in certain areas for salaries. Department heads met now two weeks ago and began the process of examining why and how we can fix some of this lack of competitiveness. What, what you saw tonight is a short-term solution to what we hope we bring back as a comprehensive fix along with the budget document. But there's some other solutions that we think we need to have in our, our toolbag right now to facilitate actions as they are needed. This is not to say these will be common occurrences, but I can't tell you that they're going to be only one-ifs, that they're going to be isolated in only one, one cases. That is to reestablish internal equity amongst employees when a new hire comes onboard at a higher wage than folks who've been in the organization for periods of time have, have earned. I use the case in point of, of Water Resources Department and their need to hire an assistant plant manager at the water plant. That individual is well-skilled, he's worked for us before, we know his capabilities, both in leadership and his technical expertise. The salary with which we can attract him to work for the city places two of his roughly comparable compatriots in the department at a real disadvantage monetarily. And so what we're asking council for is the ability for the manager to make recommendation on salaries to individuals who are currently employed to maintain that internal equity inside the departments. However you would like for us to bring those back for your review, whatever constraints that you would like to put on us on those types of actions, we're more than happy to comply with. I can tell you that, that I won't consider any of those where the department head has not had some sort of overall conceptual plan for where and how his salaries of employees relate amongst each other. We will not bring back a, a proposal that has major budget implications or that puts any departmental budgets in jeopardy. And again, these are short-term improvements until the full plan can be brought back to council at the budgets. Glad to make any, any adjustments that you all would like for us to see in here, but feel like the flexibility is required to get key people back into the employment of the city.
What, what kind of parameters would be realistic? I'm not sure, you know, since we haven't done this before, what's a realistic parameter to require? Because there ought to be some oversight at some point, you know, that you would trigger coming back to council to inform us. There ought to be something, what's...
Happy, happy to bring these back to council as they occur. We have one currently in front of us, I think there may be two more in the process. Again, I don't think there's a great number of these that will be coming forward. They are, in some instances, one-ifs, but I think the flexibility, no different than we just spent money to have to bring engineers on through service agreements because our pay plan is so inadequate, we're not competitive for those engineers in terms of their actual employment. I think we've, we've got to provide our department heads and the managers some flexibility to keep employees who are already with us, who have stayed in the employment of the city, who do the same or very comparable jobs in a right relationship with new hires that we bring in at higher wages.
Do we feel like, and I'm all for giving the department heads flexibility to be able to make these decisions, but do we feel like that, you know, one of the biggest complaints that we hear is internal equity? And by giving that authority without having some kind of plan in place, do we feel like that we're going to create more internal equity issues by doing this?
I, I think you could inside of the department. I, I don't think there are broad opportunities for these to bleed over from one department to another, but certainly, I think anytime you give existing employees salary increases inside that department, you have some of those risks where other employees, what, what people get paid is not a secret in our organization, I'm, I'm not sure that would shock you, but there are no secrets in terms of pay in our organization. So I, I think there is the opportunity for some potential conflict inside of a department, but because of the special nature of these positions, these are not general labor, these are not CDL drivers, these are technical people with specific expertise that, that come in ones and twos in terms of a whole organization, not in tens and twenties.
The thing we've got to be careful about if we're not consistent in how we do this, and, and really, I think that's the key word for the council right now, if talking on Friday is stability, is, is getting stability within the organization as, as a whole. You know, if we have, I'll use a CDL driver for example, you know, we've got CDL drivers that work for different departments all over the city, and we've got to be really careful that whatever we do in one department with a CDL driver, that, that's going to have to be looked at, what we're doing in this other department over here. Because, you know, we went through this, I forget how many years ago it was, but we ended up having departments competing against departments where people were leaving different departments to go to another department. So I don't want us to get back in that, that situation where, you know, not only we're competing with the private sector, we're competing internally with, with, with that. So, you know, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but we've got to take those into consideration.
This is not the broad fix where we find ourselves uncompetitive, CDL drivers, other types of general labor in various areas. This is primarily what we think works quickly to help out with technical people who have special skills and abilities that they bring to the organization. We do not see this as a broad fix for the issues that we've identified in the major parts of the workforce.
Is there something that needs to happen? I mean, does it need to be so flexible that it happens whenever you, we want to do it? Do, that, that we adjust it at that point in time, or can we do it once a year, twice a year, quarterly? Some, some kind of thing that has some kind of parameter?
I, I really think this is more of the opportunistic timing. The, the case in front of us right now is an opportunity where, for a lot of reasons, we have the opportunity to hire an employee with skills and abilities that we know and have tested, but we can't hire him inside the pay schedule that we currently operate from. So, if we, it's clear that we don't have to hire this individual, we could make do. We've made do without this position now for a number of months, but we've identified this as a key employee that we want to bring back into the organization. That's just the one-ifs. I think the next one that comes before you is a one-off. I think the third one that may come before you is a one-off. These are not the broad fixes. The broad fixes have to come as we do our work to get ready for your next budget, but I think that immediate relief comes in certain areas by doing these one-ifs with technical skilled positions, no different than the one-ifs that I hope we did tonight on hiring engineers via contract. So, the hiring of engineers via contract is a very expensive way to provide that skill, and yet we are not competitive today to go out and recruit those positions.
If it's okay, I, I, I kind of want to address this in a two-pronged approach, because I, I don't think, after the retreat, that us four need to decide for the group on, on whether or not this is going to continue to be an ongoing practice. However, I have talked with Darren this week, and I do think it's very important, in the particular case of the Water and Sewer Department, that this position be filled. And so, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the recommendation of the hire for the Water and Sewer Department, and I'll start there.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a motion not on making adjustments?
I'm happy to bring them back one at a time, because I really don't see more than about three in our future.
Okay.
This is on the Water and Sewer Department only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you call the rule.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Is there any more discussion on, now that we've got that?
And now that we've taken care of the Water and Sewer, I, I think that it would be advantageous for us to either, I think the best thing for us to do tonight would be to defer any comment on Item B as a general condition, because I think it's, it's, it's probably something that we need all council members involved in the conversation.
Point of clarification, on your motion, was that to, to hire the individual and do the internal equity moves of the two others?
Yes.
Thank you. And that, that's fine. I, I really do see these as one-ifs in a way. We'll bring them back as, as needed.
You know, the one thing, I, I'd just make a comment, and this is not directed to Mr. Cromley at all, you know, I, I've made this comment, I spoke to a group yesterday, and, and I said, after our workshop that we had last Friday, I'm honestly feeling a better spot of the direction that we're headed as a city and hearing from the department heads than I felt in a long time. Now with that, then the excitement that's coming through, I think we have to be realistic, and again, this is nothing to Mr. Cromley, but there's going to be someone else that's going to be sitting in that seat as we're going through this city manager process, and we have to make sure that we're not running to change everything as quick as we possibly can where we see that there's things that need to be fixed, because we've got, you know, we are in the middle of another process, so I just say that, that I think we need to be able to identify where these issues are and we need to fix those, but again, we need to get stability where we are right now, get some of these things leveled off, and then find good ways to tackle it and move forward there, because, you know, we may make some changes right now that we think is the, the best changes in the world, but when the new person comes in, they may look at that and say, what were y'all thinking? This doesn't work. So, I, just, and that's, again...
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank you all for the time and effort you put in at the retreat last week. I can tell you how much department heads appreciated it and enjoyed it.
We're not done with them yet.
Not done with them yet.
It was really good to hear from everyone.
It really was.
All right, you've got Boarding Committee, Mr. Cromley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've got the Airport Commission recommending a reappointment of Mr. Steve Waldron and appointment of Ms. Gelslotke. We'll make the comment again, we had...
We're not done with them yet.
Not done with them yet.
It was really good to hear from everyone.
Really was.
All right, you've got Boarding Committee, Mr. Crumley, thank you very much. You've got the Airport Commission, I'm recommending a reappointment of Mr. Steve Waldron and appointment of Ms. Gelslotke. We'll make the comment again. We had several different people who have wanted to serve on this Airport Commission, but with the recommendation that the General Manager of the Airport, these are the two recommendations we're bringing forward.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi.
All right. Any beer permits?
Yes, we, I have two items. I'm going to start with the regular beer permits first, and then I have another item to follow. We have a special event application from the Middle Tennessee Museum of Natural History. They have four different events they have planned already for 2018. All of these events are on their site, and they meet our requirements for the application to be approved. We also have a special event application for the Discovery Center. Two of the events are on their site. One is at a private residence in Georgetown. I'm assuming they'll go through Mr. Balachandran for a special event application for that location when the time comes. Otherwise, that application meets our requirements for approval. We have an ownership change for a restaurant at 301 Northwest Broad Street. They are asking for an on-premise application, I'm sorry, an on-premise permit for beer. They have met our background requirements, but they do need to finish up their building codes inspection, so if you approve that tonight, we'll issue this permit once they have finished those inspections. We also have an ownership change for a restaurant at 505 Casey Lane, Suite E. The background check meets our requirements. They also need to finish up their building codes inspection, so if you approve that tonight, we would issue that permit once they get their approvals. We have a catering permit for the New Party Fowl at 127 Southeast Broad Street. They want to be able to cater beer off their location. The background meets our requirements. Everything else in the application is in order, so we could issue that permit if you approve it tonight. Finally, we have a market for a new location on 610 Old Bridge Avenue. That application is in order except for the building codes inspections, that they've not had beer in that location in the past, that's why it's listed as a new location. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions for you.
Any questions?
So move.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi.
Part B, I have laid a list of non-compliance complaints in front of you. I also emailed these to all of council yesterday. These locations have had sale of minors, some up to three times, and we are requesting to either have you hear these cases or to send them to our hearing officer, which we put into place a couple of years ago, and that's what you have voted to do in the past. But each time we have these, we bring them to you because in the ordinance it states you have 14 days to make a decision before it defaults to go to the hearing officer. So we thought we would go ahead and get these in the mail tomorrow and ask you tonight if anyone is interested in having the hearings go to you directly as opposed to the hearing officer who is appointed.
Move we send them to the appointed hearing officer.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, if you call the rule.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi.
Any statements to be paid?
Not tonight, thank you.
Any other business from the staff, from the city council? I have one quick comment. We have had some break-ins at some of our trailheads on our people breaking into cars. You know, I like to think we have lots of good people in Murfreesboro, but we have some that are waiting for you to leave things in your cars. So we initiated last year our Park Smart promotion, so if you're parking at a Greenway trailhead, please do your best not to leave items that are visible in your cars for those who don't have good intentions. With that, we're now working on installing security cameras throughout our park system, prioritizing Greenway trailheads. We've got increased patrols, and we're actually currently hiring another police officer that will be designated to our park system, and we're doing crime data analysis to better predict the patterns of some of the things that are happening. So we're going to do everything that we possibly can to make sure that we're able to monitor and there are things that the police are doing that they're continuing to work on, but please make sure and do your part. If you're parking at any of our park systems, don't leave your purse, your car door unlocked, those things in visible sight. All right. There's no other business, we will stand adjourned.